Mr. Nelson, you guys are all comfortable? Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Laurie?
Up here.
Thank you. Mrs. Schmidt?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
We will now have the reading of our mission statement by Debbie Rogers. The mission of Grand County School Board is to join with the community, parents, and staff to provide a safe, caring environment in a fiscally responsible manner. Our ultimate goal is to teach every child to succeed at their highest potential through strategic policy decisions. Do you have a question to apply?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Jean is one first, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Moving on to number six, the construction updates and approval. For the Mr. Smith.
Good evening, everybody. I have a great construction update, everyone's been patient for this. Before things were considered, the first one is kind of the adjustment of all the changes for the ATC project, bottom lines, and then credit of $7,000, so that's a good amount. Hitting some of the highlighted pieces of this, we did some landscape stone around the back, there's a little bit of regrading we had to do because the power line, the power company wanted us to reroute sometimes, they went a little further, it's really clear if you want to, there are trees. One of the big credits we had is we're very blessed with good weather, so we did not need the cement stabilization that you get did, you did not need the cement stabilization, nor the undercutting, that's two separate line items, because if we haven't had it at a late moment, usually it's very expensive, so we did a modest amount, get an exceptional season, actually getting concrete put in foundations, no prepared, and paving subgrades all stage, that's what generated a lot of the credit. One of the other things was we had a voice design to look all center of the door, and the intent, the request was to move it a little bit, that required a little extra structural stuff to install it in a little different location, and then add some AGAC implications, that was an add. There was some marketing, some underground utility down, the future rappelling tire we added into this project, there was a little bit of existing part on curb we added, we took the opportunity to update some of the curtains and some of the existing welding booths, that was $2,600. Took a credit, we're using epoxy coated flooring, and then spent, we have that money back, just doing a polished floor, like some Vivos, that was just kind of a design change that yielded credit as well, so that was really kind of the summary of the eight or 10 items that went in for a net credit of $7,000. All in all, our changes, the next one, very happy to be here. Are there any questions on the changes? The other thing here, consideration is a rather large payment to DRE, so this is kind of a point where it's one of the larger ones you'll receive throughout the entire project. So we did get it all backed open enough. Doing this for quite a while, I'm going to say my voice turned out unpleasant, but we got it all pulled together, and it all opened fine, so now we're kind of in a comfortable flight path, where contractors can draw down the $300,000, kind of jump around, do a series of classrooms this fall, another series of classrooms kind of Christmas and spring break, and there's going to be one midway that kind of hits after spring break in that summer, that like the gym lanes and all the other areas, and kind of clean the whole outside down. So that's kind of a good start. A lot of the site work, like the fire menu is all installed around the side, and all those pieces are all kind of built back, you know, we'll save volume, the parts are being completed, I'm going to get a chance to shoot them. Yeah, man, $400,000. Check that out. And the kitchen as well.
I will answer a question about the kitchen.
Yes, ma'am.
What owed you the money because I noticed that the materials were like around $50,000, the labor was almost $200,000, so is that right?
Uh, yeah, I never see the actual payout, I think we bought the equipment and another payout probably, and a lot of the labor was announced, I know that the equipment has used like four months of the time, so I'm guessing the equipment was probably three, four months ago, it's on that take ticket I came, and now we get the big labor, and now we actually get it all installed. But it does, you know, full fit and finished, like a lot of it's new tiling and paint, all those things, and there's quite a bit of new equipment that went in there, that's all stored outside.
Is it like industrial, like the ATC, is it more school?
It's all, it's all big commercial stainless, like everything else. He is a kitchen designer, Joey Smith, and that's all he does, is commercial kitchens, and I would say eighty percent of his work are school kitchens, so that's what he does, and he looks at brands, he gets a lot of feedback on organic, it's all pulled up, and he's pretty passionate about some of that, I've even seen cost of luggage, food service directors on, oh, you don't want that brand, you want this brand, it's just one of those things, he's pretty engaged on all of those things. And other than that, you have two just housekeeping things, I'm cleaning up on the mading, and the...
Security.
Yes.
Well, let me see, was there a $41,000 credit or extra spend before you paid it? It was like a negative $41,000?
I didn't see the paving BG5, I don't have a copy of it.
I can't pull it up right now, but I was just wondering if you would be taking that down, maybe you did on five, it could be like...
You got a copy of BG5 for the table? Of course, without a call. Having a chill in the evening. BG cost of $919 and a final of $877, so $41,000 credit we had. And that is almost all against unused contingency.
What's the credit for that?
Was unused contingency is what it is. Yeah, so, and what that number is, that's $40,875 per contingency that wasn't used. And then we budgeted $1,000 for printing costs, and we put in two, so if you add those two up, that's $21,530, so that's the credit.
Good. Are there questions then? Okay, do you have an approval of the grant ATC change order number four?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Do you have an approval on number two, pay application number eight, for DRE renovation in the amount of $10 million, here it's only $5,708.67. Do you have a second? Certainly, all in favor? Now moving on to the third one, approval of BG5 for the GCHS security vestal. Do you have a first?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Sure.
All in favor? And the final one, approval of BG5 for the paving. Do you have a first?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Moving on to the highlight of the evening, we have recommendations for our GSP, GSA, and spring athletes this evening. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you all for being here tonight. We have the privilege of celebrating several student groups tonight, along with our student athletes, we're going to recognize our GSP, our GSA, and our junior chef participants, so we're super excited to have everyone here. We will start with our student athletes. Our student athletes had a great spring season, and these seasons didn't end in school, and these athletes participated in their sport up here in the middle of June, so they were recognized, they were representatives of Grand County schools through June, when all their friends were around them, so, you know, they put in work, they worked hard, and we're excited to celebrate them this summer night. So, we're going to start with our softball team. Our softball team has been 32nd district champions for four years in a row, so we're super proud of them. They can't help that they're in the toughest region of the state, right? So, we're going to get to state soon, but it's a super tough region, and that is honest truth. So, let's recognize these girls real fast. So, Jamie Corbin. Liza Simpson, she's a college. Miley Rose. Aubrey Isaacs. Laila Holt. Patty Dennis. Peyton Nosby. Riley Hartlock. Alexis Barnes. Jamie Vance. How can I hurt? Roland Siders, a colleague? Sarah Smith, sorry. Kate Hudson is a colleague? Alexis Cole is here. Alexis was also named in the 32nd district alternate team. And we have Rihanna Nakman. She was a member of the 32nd district alternate team, a region alternate team, she was a member of Kentucky Coaches Association, Kentucky Prep Softball East-West All-Star Team, the Softball Coaches Association Class III A second team of state, and she received the Birmingham Stadium Picture Junior West Team Award. You're in the middle, so. One, two, three, one more. Congratulations. Right, next we will recognize our tennis team. We had several tennis athletes represent us at regionals this year, and that is a humongous feat, since we would come to this team for sure in the last round, so we're super proud of those athletes. We will recognize if anyone is here. Paige Wisher, she's a college. Miranda Perkins is in college. Megan Lian's in college. Ellie Lee. Kate Williams. Molly Bates. Jordan Shaggy. John Brady. Kate Cumming. Over. All right, we'll move on to our basketball team, I know we have some fellows here for that. All right, so, this year, our student anglers represented us for their second season, and they went to state again, which is amazing, and they are ready this year to conquer state again, and hopefully reach some titles, which would be amazing, so, we want to recognize a KHSA A state qualifier and a finisher in fifth place at state, Hunter Lilly. And Hunter's teammate is Mr. Luke Rinal. Next we have a KHSA A state qualifier, a ninth place at state, and SAFTVT Division Middle School Team of the Year, Mr. Luke Carroll. And his teammate, Mr. Colin Freeman. All right, next we're going to recognize our track and field team. Our track and field athletes consistently represent us wonderfully at state, we're so proud of them, we have multiple state qualifiers, but possibly most amazing part is that they ensure that all students... I just think that's amazing. So, we're going to recognize a KHSA A Region 5 sixth place in Unified Shot Put, a KHSA A state qualifier, and fifteenth at state for Unified Shot Put, Addison Case. Next we have a KHSA A Region 5 seventh place in Unified Long Jump, a ninth place in Unified Two by Fifty meters, a conference championship in the Unified Long Jump, a state qualifier, a state championship tenth place finish for Unified Long Jump, and a state championship sixteenth place finish in Unified Two by Fifty meter, Connor Steinbauer. Next we have a KHSA A Region 5 sixth place in Unified Shot Put, a fifth place runner-up in the United Unified Long Jump, a state qualifier, a KHSA A state championship sixth place in Unified Long Jump, and a KHSA A state championship fourteenth place in Unified Shot Put, Mr. Owen Leek. Next we have our KHSA A Region 5 seventh place in Unified Long Jump, fifth place in Unified Shot Put, ninth place in Two by Fifty meters, a NKCTC Conference Champion in Unified Long Jump, a state qualifier, a state championship tenth place in Unified Long Jump, a state championship fourteenth place in Unified Shot Put, and a state championship sixteenth place in Two by Fifty meter, Miss Ellie Lee. Next we have our KHSA A Region 5 runner-up in Unified Long Jump, our Region 5 sixth place in Unified Shot Put, a state qualifier, our KHSA A State Championship sixth place finish in Unified Long Jump, and a fifteenth place finish in Unified Shot Put, Miss Joanne Lee. All right, moving on, we have a Region 5 third place finish in 110 meter hurdles, a fifth place finish in the boys 300 meter hurdle, a 110 meter and 300 meter, meter conference championship, a state qualifier, a Class III A state championship in the 110 meter hurdle, eighteenth place finish, and he's the current boys' record holder for 110 meter and 300 meter hurdle, Mr. Gavin Scruggs. All right, to round us off, we have a fifth place finish, oh wait, no, sorry, I got it, Region 5 runner-up in the 1600 meter, a Region 5 third place for 3200 meter, and NK, NCKTC Conference Champion in the 800 meter, a fourth place in the Kentucky Dream Mile, a KHSA A state qualifier, a fifth place finish at the state championships in the 1600 meter, and he's the current GCHS record holder for boys 800 meter, 1600 meter, and 3200 meter, and he just signed, that gives him one play to run track at the K, which is awesome, Mr. Lincoln here. One, two, three, one more. Congratulations. Okay, we're going to move on to our student organizations, we have, first of all, we're going to recognize our students who participated in the Governor's Scholar Program. Governor's Scholar is a premier student experience for courses at Kentucky, the application process is intense, and we're super proud of these students, so if you are here, please come forward, this is Ashley Zatawa. I'm Amy Wing True. John Brady. Miss Leewell. We have one participant in the Governor's School for the Arts, he represented Grand County in photography, goes to UK to Amazing Futures, his name is in Manuel Catalan. And then the last group that we're going to recognize is our junior chef participants, these are students who participated at the state fair with our food service director, Mrs. Maggie Livingood, and the high school culinary teacher, Miss Sarah Scott. These guys created a, what was it, one of them was orange chicken, it was their own recipe, they were judged on a big stage, they cooked it there, and then they went into a restaurant, which was a great experience, so, if you're here, Ison V., Jas Thomas, Logan Rogers, Abe Hettard, and Devon Edwards. Thank you all.
We will now take a short recess for about 10 minutes, so we can congratulate everyone, and there's some goodies up front, if you'd like to stop some, congratulate a little more out, if you're going to stay at the rest of the meeting, or if you want to, we've got about 10 minutes.
I'm trying to, we have to just email them briefly, so. That would be great, that would be great, I'll be here pretty much all day. Thank you, this is Essie Early, sir.
I'll be the perfect cordial.
See ya, thanks.
Rice Krispie treats. Hold on. Rice Krispie treats, where?
Hold on. What time is the?
Great, tomorrow?
Five.
Later.
Happy Vegas.
Okay, we'll pick up with number nine, we just have a couple of comments, before we go, a comment is a very important one. No one said that, so we're going to have a question, which is our claims, do you have a motion to approve the claims? Do you have any second?
I'll second.
No, do you have any discussion on the claims, or any questions on the claims? All in favor? Okay, all in favor of approving the claims? Superintendent Travel, do you have a motion to approve that?
I don't know about that.
Arguing? All like a second, all in favor of approving this travel expenses? We're moving on to number 12, is the consent agenda. We have a few things on there tonight, so do you have a motion to approve it? Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any step, any discussion on the consent agenda? Everybody good with everything? Everybody good with everything?
I've got a question about Head Start. Do the kids ride the bus to Head Start?
I don't think so. I can't answer one of the questions for sure.
No, they do not.
Do you have Head Start's full day update?
I can call this thing, but I can't call this thing.
That's okay, I was just curious, maybe next time.
And no more questions, all in favor of reviewing the agenda as of this, please, are you ready? Okay, we don't have any working actions, may I go anywhere? No, all business. The new business is approval of the working budget, which we were seeing last week, and we had some information from Brian about the working budget. And do you have a motion to approve the working budget? And second? Any discussion on the working budget? Are they good with it? All in favor, raise your hand then, please. We're down to reports, number sixteen, do any board members have anything they'd like to share? Yep, okay. Mr. Chau, do you have anything you would like to share from your superintendent?
My report this week, well, this month, I'm sorry, with respect to standard free cultural leadership, secrets in our stands, and acts on the board of systems culture, as in the improved performance of all school. Each sheet works to understand the people in the district and community, as well as their history and traditions, as a support to support and achieve district goals. The superintendent must be able to improve the district culture if needed, to align the work of adults within the district goals and improve in student learning, infusing the work with passion, meaning, and purpose. So as I reported to you in the work session, the strategic plans everybody, results, you plan others, I would point out, and that seventy-one percent of the respondents believe that earning is top priority, sixty-three percent of families feel their partners in their child's education, sixty-nine percent believe that many volunteer opportunities exist, fifty-eight percent believe that communication is clear and consistent, sixty-one percent believe that students are prepared to lead successful lives upon graduation, and thirty percent believe that both follow graduate correctly, identifies key attributes of successful graduate. We have always solicited for committee members, we talked about that at the work session, so the late that closes on the fourteenth of September, and then one big word with the text that we, a public work session, so that's my report for standard three. We give a homecoming Friday night, and Barnes staple again, Friday night as well, that's going on this week. Ray and Jane are on the same day for the first time in ninety-nine years. So we should make the best of it, or something. We're talking about the table, I think. Correct and hot.
Awesome. And I'm guessing our annual chefs, our junior chefs are gonna be there, helping with that.
As well as at that day, so those people, student groups will be well represented.
The final down report is the bonnet report, and joining with us the September breakdown of the new mistakes that we review each month. So if anybody has any questions about that, I'm sure we can provide an answer to that. We also have our financial balance and our estimated office balance. So what we're doing right now, six million, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty dollars and eight cents. Any questions on the bonnet report?
Do we have, do we have much money we're getting?
Um, see. Yeah.
Yes, we do. I would have to pull it, I don't have it off the top of my head. Hang on, actually, maybe I do. All right. Women on the booth.
Do you have the map, Ryan, or do you just email them, or do we have mine?
Yeah, well, I've got like eighty pages here.
I'll be fine before we get done, we'll share it then.
Ryan, that thirty-page contract we got?
Yes.
For changing his arms. Will it affect, will it do affect?
Immediately.
Immediately.
The contract actually was, is up on the fifteenth, so it will go into effect on the fifteenth.
Yeah, I couldn't find anywhere where it's, yeah, exactly. Thank you. I'm sorry.
So if we're in the Nathan's email, are we gonna get some disruption and some things right now?
We could have. They resolved all that for us. It was with this paper cut, it was what we talked about at the work, at the work session last week, it's that third-party company. But they've got, they worked all that out. We were getting some error messages was all, everything, most things were working, there was some mobile apps that wouldn't work. So I got with Conica Minolta, they got with that third-party company, and they got it all worked out that day. So everything is up and working fine.
So everybody don't have any disruption?
No, no disruption.
It rolls over in September fifteenth then. Okay, the DPP report, we have the attendance thing here for the first one. And we have the desk there, we have been ninety-five percent so far. It's the district, and we have thirty-one, forty-six on number two, that we have. Looks like some of our meetings have been a little bit higher, but I know we've had some strip and other things going on in some of the buildings. Except, blue, I think blue too. First, personnel actions, we're on the e-meeting, and, and what's concerning, is something else to share? Anybody else have any, just that, what we heard? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do you have a second? Tag, three, one, two, three, all in favor of reserve? Thank you, everyone.